To Title VII of the Dodd-Frank Act will come to order. Thank you for being here today. In a way, we've already had this hearing during the last Congress. In fact, we held more than a dozen hearings on Dodd-Frank Act during the last Congress, with dozens of witnesses, and we have discussed all of the bills or topics that are on the agenda today during those past hearings. Unfortunately, the reason we're still talking about the very same issues is because the same concerns still exist with parts of Dodd-Frank. We stand to harm significant portions of our economy if these issues are not addressed in legislative fixes. Since the start of 2011, the feedback we've heard all across the country has been fairly consistent. Farmers, ranchers, financial firms, Main Street businesses are worried about some of the unintended consequences of Dodd-Frank rules. We've heard from public power companies that might not be able to hedge against volatile energy prices because their counterparties are walking away. As a result, energy prices could rise for millions of Americans, an unacceptable result of what was certainly never contemplated when Dodd-Frank was written to reform our financial system. And we've heard from manufacturers who employ hundreds of thousands of Americans that they will have to alter their business models because they may be required to post margin on important risk management trades or on their very own internal transactions. It boils down to this: Some of these regulations could make using derivatives so expensive that businesses will be forced to stop using them to hedge against risk. That increases costs for consumers and reduces stability in the marketplace. This is completely contrary to the intent of the original Dodd-Frank legislation. Today, we'll review legislation that's balanced, that are balanced proposals, that ensure that legislation is implemented in the manner that Congress intended, or provides a technical fix to ensure that Dodd-Frank does not interrupt the markets or harm the economy. It's good to note that this committee heard from top regulators from Japan and the European Union just last December, who warned that without better coordination between the CFTC and international regulators, there will be global fragmentation of the derivatives markets. That cannot be allowed to happen. One of today's bills, a discussion draft, will directly address that issue in a common-sense manner that Dodd-Frank should have already included. It's very important to note that every single bill we'll discuss here today is bipartisan, with Republicans and Democrats, both on the Agriculture Committee and the Financial Services Committee, supporting them. They are bipartisan because they contain common-sense tweaks to ensure that Dodd-Frank does not unnecessarily burden our agricultural producers, job creators, local utilities, financial institutions, and small businesses. Again, all of these bills are intended to restore the balance that I believe can exist between sound regulation and a healthy economy. I look forward to advancing all of them in a bipartisan fashion, and I now turn to the ranking member to make his opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to welcome CFTC Chairman Gensler back to the committee for what I've been told is his 50th appearance before congressional committees, going all the way back to his confirmation hearing, so I think that must be some kind of a record. So we appreciate your endurance. For his first two years in office, Chairman Gensler was helping us fix the financial mess left over from years of deregulation and lax oversight. And during the past two years, he's been called to account for the Commission's implementation of Dodd-Frank reforms enacted in 2010. Last Congress, this committee held several hearings, as the chairman has indicated, where we listened to a host of stakeholders express concerns about Dodd-Frank's implementation. Each of these hearings, I repeatedly recommended patience and caution for those seeking to change the law, and I think that patience generally has been rewarded, with the Commission producing thoughtful final rules that respond to the concerns that were being raised. Today's hearing is to examine legislative proposals seeking to address many of those same concerns, and I again recommend patience. Despite the bipartisan support that some of these bills may have, I just don't see how any of these have any chance of passing the Senate. Additionally, given the CFTC's performance, I still believe that much of the legislation we're discussing today will not be needed in the end. The CFTC is most likely going to get this right, and to date, many of the final rules coming out of the Commission have broad bipartisan support and are addressing the concerns that stakeholders have expressed to both us and to the Commission. Ironically, the issue that may truly need to be addressed, margin requirements on end users, is a problem not being caused by the CFTC, but by the proposed rule of the prudential regulators. In my opinion, we should be bringing the prudential regulators in to answer questions about their proposed rule, because we aren't holding them accountable for their actions. I raised the same issue in the previous Congress when we held a hearing on the predecessor to H.R. 634, and, you know, we still haven't heard from them. Sometime this summer, the CFTC will complete the vast majority of its rulemaking. To me, that's the best time to see what has been done, see the whole picture, and at that point, fix what needs to be fixed. And hopefully, by that time, we'll have completed our work in the House on the farm bill, and then we can turn our attention to the CFTC reauthorization, which I believe is the best chance for enacting any improvements to Dodd-Frank if necessary. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time, and yield back.
I thank the gentleman for his comments. The chair requests that other members submit their opening statements for the record so that the witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure there's ample time for questions. I would like to welcome our first panel witness today, the Honorable Gary Gensler, Chairman of the U.S. Commodity Futures Trading Commission, Washington, D.C. Chairman Gensler, please begin when you're ready.
Chairman Lucas, Ranking Member Peterson, members of this committee, it's always good to be with you. I appreciate that note about 50 hearings in this job, but I think I've also been told it's my 10th before you, and I always so enjoy being here and the advice and counsel that you give us, whether it's in the rule-writing or everyday business of the Commission. Five years ago tomorrow, Bear Stearns failed. You might remember this was a large financial institution in New York. The Federal Reserve and others arranged its quick sale to J.P. Morgan, but that was really the beginning of what we've now called the 2008 financial crisis, those next six months or next year that put so many people at risk in the American economy, and 8 million people lost their jobs. In response, this committee was the first to address derivatives reform, early in 2009, when you passed a bill, and then working later with the House Financial Services, passed what was the core of what became Title VII. And most of that is now in place. So what does this mean? For the first time, the public is actually benefiting from seeing the price and volume of each swap transaction. It's available free of charge on a website. I see that members from DTCC are here. They can tell you about the website. It's free of charge, like a modern-day ticker tape, that people can see the price and volume of swaps' transactions. For the first time, the public also benefits from greater access to the markets with the risk reduction of central clearing. This week, on Monday, mandatory clearing for these big dealers took hold. That means that there's lower risk and the system's a little less interconnected. And for the first time, the public's benefiting from the oversight of the dealers themselves. We now have 73 that are registered. It was at the center of your hearing that you had with the international regulators in December. We did move forward, exempting many of the things that they need to do until this coming July to try to get it right and focus on something called substituted compliance. This reform was not about preventing firms from failing, though. Just as Bear Stearns failed five years ago, certainly some firms will fail in the future. I think that this part of the bill was about making the system safer because it's less interconnected, that it's less likely that taxpayers will have to come in and help out or bail out a firm, as we all did in AIG. But I think it's also so that the end users get a more transparent market and more access to the market. It's about those firms that employ 94% of private sector jobs. That's what end users, when we use that term, non-financial firms, employ 94% of jobs in this economy. And the reforms were about giving end users a choice. They don't have to come into clearing and buy the CFTC rules, as the ranking member mentioned. They would not be caught up in this margining for the non-cleared swaps. Now, we do have key things in front of us. In 2013, we still need to finish out some pieces of this business. They're still promoting further transparency before the transaction. It's called pre-trade transparency, and we have, I think, in front of us finishing those rules on what's called swap execution facilities to do that. And secondly, a big part of it is the cross-border application, as the chairman mentioned, of the swaps' market reform. What Congress recognized in enacting reform is that modern finance, many of these institutions span the globe, and risk knows no boundary. If a run starts in one part of a financial institution, it runs right back here. That's what happened at Bear Stearns, of course, but also it was true of AIG, which ran most of its swaps' business out of London. It was true of Lehman Brothers. It was true a decade earlier in something called long-term capital management. It was run in Connecticut but booked, their $1.2 trillion of derivatives in the Cayman Islands. So failing to incorporate the basic lesson of modern finance, I think, would leave the American public at risk. It would move maybe the jobs to the Cayman Islands, or the P.O. boxes to the Cayman Islands, or the jobs somewhere else, but the risk would spill right back here if it's a U.S. financial institution. And so I think we have to address that, and we're trying to do that by July of this year. We also have in front of us an important and tough agenda around the London interbank offer rate. It's not the center of this hearing, but I'm glad to take any questions on that. I think, long-term, though, we're all going to find that that rate, that's been so pervasively and readily rigged, is not sustainable in our financial markets. I'd like to just close by mentioning the need for resources. The CFTC today is a little smaller than we were one year ago, and yet now the swaps' reform is upon us. I think that we are not right-sized for the critical missions that you've given us and the Congress has given us to oversee the futures markets as well as the swaps' market, so that the end users of this country can have the confidence these markets are well overseen and don't present risk to them. So I thank you, and I look forward to questions.
Thank you, Chairman Gensler. The chair would like to remind members, they will be recognized for questioning in the order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing, and after that, members will be recognized in order of arrival. As always, I appreciate the members' understanding. And I recognize myself for five minutes now. Chairman, top regulators from European Union and Japan testified before the committee in December and detailed serious concerns about CFTC's cross-border guidance, stating that if cross-border rules weren't harmonized, trades will not be able to clear. They can't be cleared. They won't take place. Firms and users will not hedge their risk, or firms will hedge their risk, but they will only take place within one jurisdiction. The consequences of that is obviously a fragmented market, significant concentration of financial risk in the U.S. system, and is exactly what we've tried to prevent with our global regulatory reform. Now, given multiple failed attempts to coordinate between the United States and international regulators, the most recently failed negotiations occurring in February, we're moving quickly towards that scenario described to us in December. Chairman, with all due respect, why don't you believe that the long-established markets will have sufficient regulatory regimes or oversee swap transactions within their own borders? Expand on it if you would.
We've made tremendous progress here in this country with the financial reform that this committee helped put in place in Dodd-Frank, and there's been great progress in Europe, Canada, and Japan in terms of the central clearing and the data reporting and some other means. We have embraced and said that where there is comparable and comprehensive regimes in other countries, we'd look to something we call substituted compliance. We could look to that home-country rule. But if a U.S. firm is guaranteeing its activities of a London affiliate or a Cayman affiliate, Cayman Islands affiliate or somewhere, if they're guaranteeing that, that risk can still come back here to the U.S., so we said there has to at least be comparable and comprehensive oversight. Not every jurisdiction will have that. Many will. Many will.
Moving to another important subject. I've heard concerns from farmers, ranchers, the small-to-medium-size Futures Commission merchants opposing CFTC's proposed rule to improve customer protections. Many of those folks say the new proposals would profoundly increase their cost, potentially threaten their existence. And this is very disturbing to me, because many of these smaller FCMs are the ones who actually serve risk management needs of my farmers and ranchers. The two groups are of the utmost importance to this committee. Putting aside your statutory requirements and giving the importance of this subject, was there an extensive cost-benefit analysis performed by the Office of Chief Economist before those rules were proposed, Chairman?
Yes, we take seriously the cost-benefit provisions in the statute that were put in the statute over a dozen years ago, and we perform then the chief economist's office participates and signs off on each of those before they come to the commissioners. They were also put out to public comment. In this case, we put out a set of proposals on customer protection to the public. Many of those proposals have gotten strong support. We got about 125 comment letters, but you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman. There's one issue in there. People have been using this term residual interest that they've raised, where we're going to take a very thoughtful look at the comments that have come in, because people have raised not only cost issues, but just some practicality issues with regard to it.
So along that line, given the outcry, does the Commission plan to re-propose the rule or make extensive changes to the rule?
I don't know yet, and I'd like to keep this committee and you apprised. The comment period only closed about two weeks ago. We extended it an extra month at the request of many market participants. At its core, what we did was we repeated what's in the law. The law says that no Futures Commission merchant should take one customer's money and use it to benefit or secure or guarantee another customer's position, their deficit or their position. And so that's, in fact, what we said, but what we found is commenters have said that intra-day, during the day, they actually do sometimes have one customer surplus guaranteeing other customers' deficits. And so we have to sort through that practical circumstance.
Just bear in mind, Commissioner, that the committee won't ignore the pleas from the smaller ag players in the market, and I'm hopeful the commission won't either. Returning to the cross-border issue, I understand the European officials could stretch the implementation timeline out into next year for their own derivatives' rules. And earlier this week, one of your commissioners even stated, or one of the commissioners even stated, it would not be unlikely for the CFTC to grant another extension to implement the cross-border guidance. So I guess my question is, if the European regulators extend their own rulemaking process into next year, and we've made no progress on substitute compliance by July 2013, global markets would be in danger of, I think the appropriate phrase is fragmentation and pooling risk. How do you plan to avoid that outcome, Chairman?
We've been committed this whole time to phased implementation. You actually only gave us one year to get everything in place, and we're nearly three years since Dodd-Frank passed. There were even bills considered at some point to ask us to take more time. We have not felt we're doing this against a clock. We want to get it balanced and appropriately in place. But I also think we keep in mind that five years ago, Bear Stearns failed, and 8 million people lost their jobs. So I'd envision, as we get closer to July, we will have checked off more things with the Europeans and Canadians and others, Japan. We now have 30 international dealers regulated and registered, which is a big positive. We have the public seeing their transactions for the first time, which is a big positive, and we'll see where we are as we approach July as to whether there's some appropriate additional phased compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My time has expired. I now recognize the gentleman from Minnesota for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Following up on that a little bit, one of my reservations, as you know, about moving forward on these bills is that we don't have the whole picture, you know, of all the rules. We don't have all the rules in place and in effect, and we don't have a full picture of what the swaps market is yet. Your testimony, you say about 80% of the way completed with these rules by August. How much of the remaining 20% do you hope to have finalized? And are there any potential issue outliers that may take longer to resolve? And if so, what are they?
We now have, with the commission, full final set of rules on this pre-trade transparency, the swap execution facility, and we're working through in a very constructive way amongst the five of us to reach a consensus and move something out. The cross-border issues, we look to finish up many of the big pieces, the guidance, by July, but there's certainly going to be more work internationally that will just continue on a day-to-day basis. We'll address more issues about rural electric cooperatives and various electricity companies where we're planning certain exemptions. So I think the bulk of what we need to do will be done by August. But one area I just want to mention that will still be outstanding is we purposely slowed down on finalizing margin for uncleared swaps, the issue that is so interesting to end users. And the Federal Reserve slowed down as well because we wanted an international agreement. And we've been working on that. We put something out in consultation last summer. We put a new document out, I think it was in February, and that should point us to probably finalizing the margin rules closer to the fourth quarter of this year because we didn't want to move forward if there wasn't, as the chairman said, harmonization on this key issue. We've been advocating with the Federal Reserve and with the international regulators that there's not a requirement for the banks to charge a margin on these uncleared swaps for the non-financial end users. But that's one piece that we purposely sort of waited until the fourth quarter.
I mean, you get, I think unfairly blamed for this margin requirement. You know, what is the discussion with you and these prudential regulators? You know, I mean, they're the ones that are causing this problem, right?
Well, the, we have jurisdiction, you gave us jurisdiction, if it's a non-bank. And of the 70 or so swap dealers, we now have statistics. The majority of them are actually non-banks. They're often the affiliate of a bank. You know, there's a sister of a bank, but that's, you've given us that jurisdiction. I think we're pretty comfortable with what we proposed.
But the problem is that the ones that are banks, that are regulated, they're telling their customers they're going to have to put margins on because the prudential regulators are going to require them to have margins. Is that what's going on?
Well, the proposal from the prudential regulators, the Federal Reserve and others, was that there was no specific requirement, but then they did include in the preamble several sentences that said, but of course, if you're extending credit, you should do that consistent with your overall credit policies of the bank. And that's, that few sentences, those key sentences in the preamble is what has been debated, and I don't know where the Federal Reserve will end up. I know what we've been advocating is to be consistent with where we are.
You've been advocating that these end-user, non-bank end-users shouldn't be required on this margin requirement.
Right, that it be just a matter of commercial, private negotiation.
So you think that the prudential regulators, you know, may come to the right conclusion at the end of the day?
I think so because in February, we put out a new consultation internationally, not just here domestically, but internationally, that included that the end-users would not be caught up in this. So that's what's this last international document that was put out and should be finalized by the summer.
Right. So, I mean, this has been a big issue that's been going on for two, three years. You know, we have bills introduced and all this stuff. But, you know, am I right that this is premature to be passing bills before we know what's the final outcome of this is going to be?
I think that you gave us clear direction on this and clear authority. We have the authority to finalize it the way you wish. The CFTC is doing that. The international consensus is aligned with what your committee's views are, or at least your views are.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
The gentleman's time has expired. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Texas, Mr. Nagabour, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Ginsler, it's good to have you. I was particularly interested in your testimony about some of the things that you're doing on LIBOR. As you know, in the other committee assignment I had, we had some discussions about LIBOR. Can you kind of give me a blueprint of kind of where we're headed with that and what kind of timeline and what, who are the market participants that are working on this issue?
I thank you, and I thank you for your leadership on these issues because I know you've been looking at it in the committee. Where we are is there's a market called interbank lending, bank-to-bank lending without posting collateral. It's called the unsecured market, or it was. What we know is it's essentially non-existent now for a lot of changes, structural changes in the banking market, and also new rule changes in the Basel Committee's capital rules. So since 2008, it's, we've had LIBOR referencing something that essentially is non-existent. We've had these three large cases that have led to $2.5 billion in fines at Barclays, RBS, and UBS. But I don't think that's the central part of the story. The central part of the story is what do we do when a market is referencing something that's not actually trading? And if it were just not trading for three days or even a week or two, that would be one thing, but this is, you know, long-term. So the international regulators, both bank regulators and market regulators, have been pursuing dialogues and discussions. The securities regulators have a consultation out on best practices and also looking at if we were to transition, how to smooth that transition. This would not be easy to transition from U.S. dollar LIBOR to something else. It'd be very challenging. It should take a long time. It should be smooth because it's so embedded in the financial system. And there's been a lot of market participants involved, either by written consultation or brought into roundtable discussions. But this goes well beyond the U.S., well beyond the CFTC because the system is so uses this rate in so many ways, even though the rate, I think, long-term is not sustainable.
So is the direction it's moving is that currently there are different currency LIBORS, Euro LIBOR, U.S. LIBOR. What, are you moving to continue to have a rate in each currency? Or are you looking for a larger, a universal number that everybody's working on?
So what the international securities regulators came around in this public consult is that any benchmark to be viable and reliable should be anchored in real transactions. It's sort of like if you were to buy a home and you asked your Realtor, what are the comparable prices in the neighborhood? You'd like to know what the comparable price is. Now, if there's no transactions for the last four years, that would, you know, you'd be less left guessing what to pay for that house. So to anchor in real transactions, Martin Wheatley, who runs the Financial Services Authority in London, has already recommended, last summer he recommended, that there shouldn't be Canadian dollar LIBOR, Australian dollar LIBOR, and six other currencies. He said, there just isn't enough there. But then that brings us back to the question about U.S. dollar LIBOR, euro LIBOR, and you said, like you said. Those are more challenging because they're so part of the financial system, and we have this fragility of relying on something that may not be referencing a true market.
Are any of the Fed's benchmarks being considered? And the only reason I ask that is because the Fed has the ability, obviously, to manipulate that, but in many cases, that does trigger, you know, other transactions. In other words, the discount rate or Fed funds rate, those kinds of things that would reflect what banks could either borrow from the Fed or could borrow from each other?
There are three or four different alternatives that market participants have been chatting about. One of them is something called overnight index swap rate that does ultimately refer to, in an indirect way, but refer to overnight funding rates for the banks, but it's based on real transactions. Other things people are looking at is there's rates based on how people do collateralized lending, the general collateral or repurchase agreements. There's even looking at the Treasury yield curve and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman's time has expired. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott, for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. But I must say at the outset that it is somewhat unfortunate that we're trying to pack so much into one relatively brief hearing. Each of these bills we're examining today deal with very complex issues that entire armies of lawyers are paid to try to understand. And while the ideas embodied in these bills are not new, a great many of the members of this committee are. So in my humble opinion, it would be preferable to break some of these bills into just a few hearings so as not to force our members, who are new to Congress and new to this committee, to drink from, sort of drink from a fire hose. So I'm hopeful, Mr. Chairman, that at least we'll get one more bite of the apple before we pass this. But nonetheless, this is the hand that we dealt, so here we are. I do want to say at the outset, however, that I am supporter of these bills that we're discussing today because I think it is very important for us to emphasize that none of these bills, neither in spirit nor in letter, seek to undermine the regulatory regime prescribed by Title VII of Dodd-Frank. Rather, they all seek to address areas of either statute or rulemaking that require clarification and adjustment. And that is why all of them have historically had strong bipartisan support, both in this committee and the other committee I serve on, Financial Services. It is in my opinion that these bills will not lead to new loopholes. These bills will not lead to lax regulation, and they will not lead to another Wall Street meltdown. These bills are not about protecting the bottom line of big banks or helping the exchanges skirt regulation. The legislation before us today is about keeping the cost of doing business down for end-users of derivatives, whether they are big companies like Delta Airlines or Home Depot, or small and large farms and ranches in our districts, and allowing them to continue to hedge price risk. This, in turn, helps keep costs down for consumers, and the ideas contained in these bills are not incompatible with the stated goals of Dodd-Frank on transparency or customer protection. We must not be afraid to make changes to Dodd-Frank where they are warranted, particularly to portions that may not work as we intended them to do or may have unintended negative consequences. So with that said, let me turn to you, Mr. Chairman Ginsler, and ask you about an issue that I've raised with you many times, and that is the extraterritorial application of Dodd-Frank rules. It would seem that with the application of clearing and margin requirements, as well as swap dealer and major swap participant registration and reporting requirements, would prevent any risk reimportation and forestall another AIG-like market failure. And yet, the cost of such extraterrestrial application would be quite substantial, not to mention the risk to U.S. competitiveness in this space. Given developments late last year, unnecessary eruptions around the October 12 deadlines, last-minute no-action letters, reports that foreign banks wouldn't do business with U.S. firms and interim final rules, let me ask you, why should Congress have any level of confidence that you are moving in the right direction and that markets won't be negatively impacted by the actions of the CFTC with respect to extraterritoriality? And also, how do you intend on getting the rest of the world to follow the United States when the SEC and the CFTC rules currently don't align on timing, process, or content in many areas?
I would hope that you'd have confidence in an agency that was handed an enormous task and has largely completed it, that we've had 40,000 public comment letters and 2,000 meetings, and we've actually addressed where we need to move and moderate or even repropose rules in a number of circumstances. I think also, on the cross-border side, I just raise that even the bills before you could blow a hole in the bottom of Title VII with all respect because whether it's through booking something in an affiliate or booking it offshore, that risk will and does come back here. That is exactly what happened in AIG.
Let me ask you, what would happen later this year if there still is not an international harmonization or even domestic harmonization?
We will continue to work, I think, very closely with the international community. We will not be exactly the same, but where there are conflicts, we're taking a very pragmatic approach. We worked through a number of them with Japan, with one of your, Masakono, who testified in December here and worked through. They have a clearing requirement. We have a clearing requirement. They were actually tightly aligned, but there was a conflict, and we did one of those no-action letters so that U.S. firms can clear in a Japanese clearinghouse, for instance. So where there are conflicts, we've been pragmatist, and that's what's led to a lot of these no-action letters, is trying to adjust and moderate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Too much time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'll now recognize myself for five minutes. Chairman, thank you for being here. Welcome. Following up on the cross-border jurisdictional issues, that kind of thing, are there countries now that you trust their regulatory scheme to be good enough that you could go ahead and grant them the substituted compliance designation like Japan or EU or Canada where, at least with respect to those jurisdictions, you can put these kinds of questions aside without a lot of hassle?
I think it's an excellent question. There's six jurisdictions overseas, it's just six, that have registered swap dealers with us: Europe, Switzerland, Canada, Japan, Australia, and Hong Kong. We've reached out to all six and said, let's get going because we could probably identify maybe not all the rules, but a substantial number of them where we can look to that home-country substituted compliance. And we made some good progress with Canada and Europe in some of those discussions.
Are there any of the six that you don't, out of hand, trust?
Oh, I trust all of my fellow regulators, but their laws and rules are sometimes a little different than ours. So it's a question whether, more technically, whether they're comparable and comprehensive for, let's say, they have a clearing requirement, that it's comparable enough. It doesn't have to be identical.
All right. So perfection's not the enemy of the good here, is it?
No, 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 no. It has to be comparable and cover the sort of waterfront, but not identical.
One of the, one of these comes up from time to time that we generally vehemently oppose is some idea of combining the SEC and the CFTC. And one of the fodder for that idea is that you can't do joint rules. You've got a U.S. person rule that for the SEC's one kind of a U.S. person, and you've got a different one. Why can't we get the, why can't you guys get together so we can put some of these kind of arguments aside? Because quite frankly, I think that would be in the worst interest of the scheme, overall scheme, to try to combine you. But those kinds of apparent lack of cooperation, for lack of a better phrase, give people fodder for that idea.
Yeah, I want to say that I do share your view about. I don't think it would benefit the American public to...
I don't either.
All right. We're together on that.
Absolutely. But...
But in terms of coordination, we are coordinating with the SEC. You granted this agency oversight about 95% of the swaps market, and the SEC has about 5%. But on U.S. person more specifically, we put out a proposal last July, guidance. We've actually narrowed it to a more territorial approach. And I think that, which we put out in December, we had one set of questions left about offshore commodity pools that are still, for the benefit of U.S. persons, are managed here in the U.S. But that narrower territorial approach, actually, I think, has been working reasonably well. That means if you do a trade offshore, even with a guaranteed affiliate, it doesn't get counted like it does to this more territorial U.S. person approach.
Well, let the record reflect, I vehemently oppose that idea because I do think the public would be harmed by it. But the closer you can work together on joint rules like that, obviously, the better. Before us today or not before us, but we've got another, the cost-benefit rule that my colleagues and I have proposed last year, passed the House with overwhelming bipartisan support, would require the CFTC to come in line with the President's executive order of... the President's executive order of cost-benefit analysis. Do you oppose that idea? Is that not in the best interest of the regulated?
I think that considering costs and benefits have benefited the, our rulemaking. I think we've done it better because we've focused on those cost and benefits. There are many choices, though, that Congress makes, that we're delegating the authority, but you make the key choice, whether there's clearing, whether there's public transparency and so forth. And so, I think just to be, to raise a carefulness that you wouldn't want us to have to reconsider the things that you've already decided in the eyes of, you know, some cost benefit.
Chairman, you're wonderful answering, but the question was, do you oppose the legislation?
I, oh, the legislation, I think the legislation would make our jobs quite a bit harder, and it would be in the future, in the future, whether there's tweaks to any cost benefit in the Commodity Exchange Act, we'll live with it, but it may well be hard to get any rule out of the building.
Okay. Speaking of the building, there is a report out that there's a data access issue with respect to the Office of Chief Economist. Can you talk to us about when you knew about it? Did you approve the program, and did it seep in, or what, just kind of quick snap, what's going on there?
So, our Chief Economist's office for years, maybe decades, has done research on data that comes into the building, and sometimes publishes some results and puts that out to benefit the public and benefit the markets. They also have, and this is for many years, used some outside consultants and academics who are, you know, credentialed and signed in. There is a question that came to our attention in December about at least one research report written by an outside academic as to whether they had the right to use the data and so forth. It came to my attention then. We immediately started to look at our credentialing, how are they documented, what sort of documents they signed and so forth. And what we did at that point in time is, we said, "Let's, for the moment, just shut down the use of any outside academics, consultants," because we found some that we weren't fully, our documentation and internal controls weren't fully up to snuff. We shut it down promptly, and we referred it to our inspector general.
Okay. Well, if you decide to do something in that arena, we'd appreciate being briefed on the internal controls and the other things that you're going to put in place to...
I look forward to it. I think that's a good idea, that we would do that.
All right. My time's expired. Mr. Aniat, Illinois, five minutes. Andrew Hart, sorry. Bill?
[inaudible]
All right, no questions. Mr. Vargas?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity. You did comment when you first got here that you were quite restrained, that we've given you an enormous task, and you're quite restrained because of resources. Could you comment a little further on that?
Well, we have 684 people. That's about 50 more people than we had 20 years ago, or 7% more than we had 20 years ago, and a little smaller than a year ago. In that time, Congress gave us the job to oversee the swaps market that is eight times larger in outstanding and risk than the futures market that we had overseen. So, we think that we need about 1,000 people. We also need significantly to grow the technology. And I know this is hard, because Congress is grappling with big issues about the federal budget, and an extra $100 million for this small agency is hard to find. But I think it's a good investment for the American public, and we simply put, are not right-sized for the mission that we have right now. Just simply, we don't have the staff to do the examinations. We don't have the staff to do the enforcement. Our enforcement staff is smaller than it was, I think, two years ago, or about the same size. And though it's not a way to measure it, these LIBOR cases brought in $2 billion to the U.S. Treasury in the last 12 months. We're funded at about $200 million.
And a follow-up question with respect then to sequester. Is the sequester in any way causing havoc in your agency, or not really, or how is it affecting you?
It pinches us. It definitely pinches us. As I said, we're a little smaller than we were a year ago. We were cautious this year, because frankly, I thought it was a reasonable possibility that we'd end up with a sequester, you know? And maybe I'm a man that came from, you know, markets and playing the odds or something. But, so we've been cautious, and so we're able to make it through the next six months, we think, without furloughs. But it, we're just not in the right place. We shrank a little bit over this last year to prepare for sequestration. We're not spending enough on technology either.
You mentioned that there are six foreign, you mentioned six, I believe, international regulators, or foreign regulators, six. And where do you find the convergence or divergence with them on the issues that we've been discussing so far?
Geographically, we're best with Europe and Japan, because they're further along. They've passed their legislation, and they've put in place most of their rules. Canada almost as far. Australia and Hong Kong have more work to do legislatively. In terms of substance, in terms of policy, where we're closest is central clearing. Seems to be a good, solid, strong international consensus. Data reporting to the regulators, strong international consensus. And some of these margin issues, actually a growing consensus. Where we're less close is whether the public gets to benefit, the end users get to benefit from seeing the price and volume and transparency. In our country, we've benefited since the 1930s in the securities markets, the futures markets. And I think we come together, actually, across the philosophies that transparency is a good thing, but it does tip things away from Wall Street, and so it shifts some information to the public, to the end users. And that consensus hasn't as well-formed in some of the other jurisdictions around the globe.
Like which ones?
In Europe, they're still putting that in front of their European Parliament, and they look to try to finalize that this summer. So, I think they're going to get there. It feels very good that they'll get there. Japan has it, but more narrowly than ours. And then other jurisdictions do not have the public transparency components, like Hong Kong or Singapore, for instance.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Chairman yields back. Austin Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And many of the questions that I had have been asked, but I do want to commend you, Chairman, for the statement that you made, that you actually prepared for the sequester. That is not something that we have heard from many of the people that were in charge of their agencies.
Well, I thank you. I just, I was reading the newspapers.
Yeah, it didn't take a, it, well, I'll hold it right there. I majored in risk management, so I think that it was just prudent to prepare for it, once it became the law of the land. So, thank you for running your agency like that. I think the other thing I would just reiterate that's been talked about a good bit here is that making sure that we're able to maintain the difference in the end users who don't propose a systemic risk to the markets, and the others who do propose a risk. And with that said, HR 634 is before us. We passed this bill last year, 370 to 24. It is, it's the legislation that simply, it essentially says that if you're an end user and you qualify for the declaring exemption, you would also qualify for the margin exemption. Again, it passed 370 to 24 last year in the House. We're going to be dealing with it again this year. Broad bipartisan support. It was not taken up in the Senate. Do you have any thoughts on that, that you would care to share with the committee?
The non-financial part of our economy employs 94% of private sector jobs, and Congress came to a judgment that those parties, who only, if I can use another statistic, only make up about 9% of this swaps market, so 94% of jobs, if I can say it that way, but 9% of the swaps market. Congress came to the judgment that the administration supported that they didn't have to come into central clearing. Consistent with that, we've proposed that they not caught up in the end user, the margin. And I think that's where we'll end up as a final rule later this year as well. And that's what we've been advocating with the international community. We've also looked that end users have more time to report their data to the data repositories. We've, in every spot, we reach out to many of these end-user communities, and you'll hear from some of them later today...
Sure.
...as to how we can accommodate to make sure that this might touch them, but touch them lightly.
Okay. One last question, if I might. You've been through 50 committee hearings, so is the President going to sentence you to another 50 committee hearings?
I guess you maybe have read some news reports. There's ongoing discussions about that. It is a terrific honor to serve, privilege, and I hope that a significant part of my remaining professional life is in public service. So, I think this job is terrific, and appearing before this committee is terrific.
Well, up to and until that, I think your testimony was very honest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gensler. I yield the remainder of my time.
Gentleman yields back. Mr. Gallego from Texas, five minutes. Pete, anything? All right. Mr. McLeod for five minutes? No? Anybody else on the... Mr. Dolan, five minutes?
Yes.
Pass. All right. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get on the questions, I'd like to thank both panels for being here to testify today about the current state of Dodd-Frank implementation. Particularly, thank you to Mr. Larry Thompson, General Counsel, for the Depository Trust and Clearing Corporation, who's come before the committee before to testify particularly on the merits of legislation, HR 742, the Swap Data Repository and Clearing House Indemnification Correction Act of 2013. Certainly appreciate my colleague Congressman Sean Patrick Maloney for joining me as a cosponsor of this bill. And finally, Chairman Gensler, I'd like to thank you as your charge with the difficult task of improving market transparency and systemic risk mitigation in global derivatives market. I'm hopeful the CFTC will achieve these goals, and I introduced HR 742 to fix a Dodd-Frank provision which threatens to undermine the bipartisan goal of enhancing transparency and mitigating systemic risk. Currently, Dodd-Frank law includes a provision requiring a foreign regulator to indemnify a U.S.-based SDR for any expenses arising from litigation relating to a request for market data. Unlike most of the world, the concept of indemnification is only established within U.S. tort law. As a result, foreign regulators have been reluctant to comply with the provision, and international regulatory coordination is being thwarted. While the idea of the provision was to protect market confidentiality, in practice, it threatens to fragment global data on swap markets. Foreign regulators will be forced to create their own SDRs, resulting in fragmented global data framework, where regulators can't possibly see a complete picture of the marketplace. Without effective coordination between international regulators and SDRs, monitoring and mitigating global systemic risk is severely limited. HR 742 fixes this problem. And while the CFTC seeks to clarify this provision through interpretive guidance, all indications are that there's no viable solution without adopting my legislation, as we'll hear from Mr. Thompson later in the day. So, with that, I have the following question for you, Chairman Gensler. Recently, your colleagues, Commissioners Summers and Chilton, both testified before this committee and agreed that HR 742 is a necessary fix to the indemnification provision of Dodd-Frank. The SEC testified to that same effect before the Financial Services Committee last year. Do you agree or disagree with your colleagues?
I think that you've provided us in Title VII a great deal of flexibility, and we've used that flexibility in the interpretation we've done. The bill, as I understand it, is consistent with that, and it is certainly something that international regulators would like, that extra step. I mean, what we did in the interpretation that we put out, that you referenced, is that international regulators, if, in their statute, if in their statute, anywhere in that statute, they have authority to get that information, then the indemnification doesn't apply. So, we interpreted it, I think, just about as broadly, but your bill certainly just goes further by just removing the indemnification altogether.
You've indicated that interpretive guidance would be enough to address the indemnification problem. So, I think, as you just indicated, global regulators disagree and have expressed that they actually support the legislative approach. I'm just wondering why there was a difference of opinion there?
Well, we've addressed it. I think that in some circumstances, global regulators would like to see information that they don't necessarily have authority to see, that their local laws or legislation haven't given them the authority to see. And so, I think, as they've expressed to us, for instance, they might want to see in these data repositories information about U.S. traders who might do a transaction referencing one of their government rates or something. So, they wanted to go a little further in what they could see.
Okay. Why are reforms like cross-border guidance at CFTC being made through interpretive guidance and staff no-action letters versus a formal rulemaking process? Shouldn't that be, shouldn't the CFTC follow the Administrative Procedures Act requirements?
With regard to guidance, we do follow the Administrative Procedures Act quite closely. There's been four or five places where we were not asked to do rules, but somebody's come in and said, "Can you interpret some words in the statute?" And this cross-border provision is something that Congress put in, it's actually technically called Section 722D, that did not have a required rulemaking, and furthermore, is not in the provisions for the Securities and Exchange Commission. This was one place that it was not the same. And so, we had a lot of people come in. We debated whether we just left it to facts and circumstances, issue no interpretation, or put out an interpretation, or thirdly, put out an interpretation subject to public comment. We chose the third to get the public input, and yes, we've gotten a lot of public input. I would include this hearing in that public input.
Sure.
So, it's been very helpful to interpret these words, and I think give guidance.
Appreciate that. You anticipated my next question, so I don't have to ask it. I'm out of time. Appreciate you. Chairman Gensler, yield back.
Gentleman yields back with apologies to Mr. Maloney from New York for skipping a while ago. Sean, you're recognized for five minutes. Sorry about that.
It's quite all right, Mr. Chairman. I'm the youngest of six kids. I'm quite used to... My mother says I was lucky to get a name, Mr. Gensler, at the end of Five Brothers. Listen, I want to, I want to reiterate the comments of my colleagues and commend you on what I think is really extraordinary public service. I was with a very significant player in a marketplace that you oversee just on Sunday night, and he said to me, "There are a dozen or so guys in Chairman Gensler's position all over the globe, and he is the only one getting anything done." And regardless of the minor differences, a lot of the people you oversee have with each of the decisions you've made, there is, from my perspective, a real growing consensus that you have been extremely effective, given the extraordinary responsibilities that Congress has placed on you recently. And so, thank you, first of all, for the work you've done. I think it's extraordinary and critical to the functioning of these markets. When I was last in Washington, I was working in the White House for President Clinton, but when I left, I ran a commodity derivatives risk management company, and we made software to try to get at some of the very issues for the commodity derivatives markets that we're still wrestling with in the larger derivatives markets. So, I've been an observer of this space for a decade, although I'm a little rusty, having worked, you know, in other areas since. But I, I'm particularly concerned about your comments about the resources that you've been provided, and I want to give you a chance to elaborate on that, because I really would like you to be able to inform the committee what the world's going to look like if we don't right-size your agency, given the extraordinary increase in responsibilities that we've bestowed on you.
I thank you. I'm one of five children, so I'm at the bottom end, too, so I know that what you speak of. I think it's also about risk assessment. I think that a wrong-sized agency can survive for a while, and then at some point, something kind of pops up. We don't have the staff right now. We don't go into the big clearinghouses annually as Congress directed us to do for the systemically important ones, Chicago Mercantile Exchange, ICE, and LCH. We don't really have the staff to do examinations for the futures commission merchants, and now the swap dealers. Now, we first rely on the National Futures Association, but we feel some obligation to have backup and to have spot checks and to move in at time, time. We don't really have the staff to answer all the hundreds of questions that are coming in. Futures industry comes in with questions, the swaps industry, and we do our best, but it'd be sure better to have. And in the enforcement side, we don't have enough people on the enforcement side. I liken it sometime to if the National Football League took on eight times the number of games, because we have eight times the number of risk that we're overseeing, and kept the same number of referees. And so, you'd have one ref per seven games, and then one game wouldn't even be ref'd. And I think what we know would happen in football is, it'd be a rougher, tougher game out there, probably, but the fans, over time, would lose confidence. And I think the analogy is, the investors at some point would lose confidence, because something would, there'd be some major hiccup. Everybody'd haul us up here. I'd be up here for my 76th hearing, and it'd be, "Well, why, Mr. Gensler, did you let this happen?" And nobody'd want to hear it, because we didn't have resources. I mean, the American public needs some protection and oversight. And so, I think that's where we are.
Well, thank you for that. And in the time I have remaining, let me just, let me just cut the other way a little bit. I mean, do you feel that you also have a role in reducing the regulatory burden of some of the firm...
some of the firms you oversee? And where do you think, if there are areas where Dodd-Frank went too far, or where we could reduce both their burden and yours, what would you like to see us do?
Well, I think Title VII, coupled with a provision that was passed 20 years ago, which gave the commission exemptive authority, where we can exempt, if it's in the public interest, some provisions, has worked very well. We've taken heart to end users, non-financial companies that are 94% of jobs, but only 9% of the market, and tried to give them more time. There's issues that we're focused on in the interaffiliate area. I know there's bills here that I might have concerns about those bills, because I think you could really undercut this. We are going to address the interaffiliate issues, and we have something in front of commissioners to finalize it. We have end users coming in about something called the treasury function. If they set up a treasury function, how to address that. But again, I think our exemptive authority gives us pretty good ways to craft things. Where we can't, we'd come to you, but I think we have some pretty good authorities, and we look to your advice and guidance on these things as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields back, Mr. Denham from California, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to follow up on that same line of questioning on the regulatory level. First of all, my belief, obviously, with Dodd-Frank was it was designed for the big banks, yet in my community, we're dealing with a lot of challenges on a day-to-day level with some of my smaller irrigation districts. Do you think that it's appropriate that that long reach goes all the way down to the irrigation districts and some of their day-to-day activities?
I'd like to follow up with you and understand what they've raised, because if I would think of an irrigation district, they would be an end user. They wouldn't have to use this clearing and margining. I'd like to find out, and if there's some practical issues there, because that we could explore together.
Thank you. I'll send you some of those details I had for this hearing, and certainly would love to follow up with you on our meeting, but...
You know, it'd be very helpful if we got such details, and we can then follow up a week or two later, and then sit down and see what the issues are.
Thank you. Just one other question. Do you believe that the swap execution facility should have five RFQs?
Congress incorporated in the bill a provision to promote transparency, that buyers and sellers meet in a marketplace and compete in the marketplace. And it actually used words that it would be multiple parties having the ability to transact with multiple parties, roughly, I have the words. We proposed that there are a number of ways to do that. The traditional way, which is called an order book, where everybody sees the bids and offers and the whole market sees it. But as an alternative, also, because this is a little bit different market, a more narrow focus, called a request-for-quote, that you could go out to a smaller number. We proposed five. I think that that is an appropriate level. I would note, there are 73 registered swap dealers. It's not a small community, and even though some of those are multiple in a company, there's at least 35 or 40 separate families or big companies making markets. I would also note, this requirement would only be in the big interest rate markets, the big four currency markets, that we have a clearing mandate, and for the big credit default swap indices that were at the heart of this marketplace. So it's narrow that way as well. And lastly, I would note, you gave us authority to exempt from this any large notional size transactions, or what people usually call block trades. So it's only these markets that are liquid enough to be cleared. There are 73 registered swap dealers, so it's not like there's only a handful about them. It's not about energy or agriculture or metal products, because we don't have a clearing mandate on those at this time.
The SEC has an alternate proposal on what the mandatory requirement is. Why the difference between the two commissions?
They had also included something, which I know it's in the weeds, but it's called order integration. They said, "If there's an order book, you must go to that, and that gets what's called time and price priority." We did not do that. That's more central to their marketplace and the futures marketplace and what we proposed. We didn't do this for the swaps marketplace. There's also many, many things that are identical in their swap execution facility rules, proposals, and errors, but those tend to get less focus, of course. This issue is one. But again, we're working through this, the five commissioners. We've done most of what we've done unanimous, many other things bipartisan. We seek consensus at the commission. We're not there yet on this one.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up with you on that one as well. And just to clarify, I understand that I call things somewhat differently than you do. Our irrigation districts are your special entities. That's the challenge in the regulation on irrigation districts, but I'll follow up with you on that as well.
Okay, I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Gentleman yields back. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Florida, Mr. Yoho, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gensler, appreciate you being here, and it's an honor to be here, and I heard you say that, too. And I also want to reiterate what Austin Scott said, that you prepared for sequestration, and I commend you for that. You know, the Dodd-Frank financial reform bill, you know, it came out, it was such a massive change to the economy. It was something we needed, some oversight and some of those things, granted, but it also created so much confusion in the marketplace. And what we need now is jobs, and what we have to do right now is create that certainty. And I looked through this, and I look forward to bringing that certainty to parts of the market. But one of the things here, it says, excuse me, it says, "Congress never intended for the end user to be subject to expensive margin requirements, which would require companies to take capital away from their businesses and hinder their ability to make job-creation investment." We see that in the community banks in our area in north-central Florida. We've got a lot of the community banks that the farmers go to, and it's impeding them in doing business. The more clarity that we can bring to that would be great, and I look forward to working through those proposals for you. And the one question I do have for you is, it's my understanding that there are five different definitions of hedging, including separate definitions within the same rule. Do you think this provides clarity for the regulated community?
You know, it's an interesting challenge, being at a regulatory agency, and sometimes a hedging exemption, Congress would want it to be wide, and sometimes they'd want it to be narrow, depending upon the circumstance, whether it's related to position limits or this clearing exception and so forth. We made it very wide with regard to the clearing exception, and I should mention, we also used our exemptive authority to exempt community banks, those smaller than $10 billion, which is thousands of banks in this land, from the clearing exception. So the vast majority of banks are treated like non-financial end users as well. But sometimes the words in the statute, and sometimes even the intent of Congress is to be wide or narrow, and in the clearing, it was pretty clear you wanted us to be pretty wide, to give these end users an out from clearing if they were hedging.
Okay. Following up with that, is there any harm in using just one common definition? Why or why not? And you addressed that a little bit.
There could be. I think if we were to use the same definition in position limits, and people debate whether they're for or against position limits, but I think it's pretty clear Congress in Dodd-Frank and for decades earlier wanted us to have them, you probably exempt almost everybody from position limits, even the speculators. I mean, the way that we sort of wrote the hedge out of clearing was very wide and was not the same words. They're not the same congressional words, because in the position limit area, it talks about bona fide hedging in a different way. But I think it would not be appropriate to use the same definition in position limits, because we'd have to then be too narrow in the clearing exception. Or you might say, "Well, that'd be good, because you would just basically gut position limits," but, you know, it'd be kind of one way or the other.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I yield back the remainder of my time.
Gentleman yields back. The balance is tied. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from California for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for having this hearing. As we know, regulations, hopefully well-intended, can have sometimes an adverse impact on people's lives, and sometimes it's unclear what the benefits may be from some of those regs. For example, public utilities, like I have in my district and probably common to many areas of the country, are seeing their access to energy supplies cut off by arbitrary regulations. So without a correction, I think one of the byproducts of this portion of Dodd-Frank may be increased costs for electricity and gas bills for regular ratepayers all around the country, which, to me, especially at this time, is unacceptable when it's, you know, hard to see what the benefit really is. So myself and my colleagues, Mr. Vargas and Denham and a few others, have joined in on a bill, H.R. 1038, which would allow government-owned utilities to continue managing their own risk with many of their former counterparties, who have continued to walk away from, even in light, the ability to enter into these agreements because of the CFTC's non-binding no-action letter. So I wondered, would you support what we're trying to do in a very narrow scope of H.R. 1038?
If I can just mention a little background, it emanated in Dodd-Frank from the Senate side, but just a little background, there was a provision in the final bill that there had to be enhanced sales practices and enhanced protections for transacting these swap transactions with what was defined as special entities, which included municipals and pension funds, or certain pension funds. We sorted through a second provision, which is, Congress gave us authority to have further define a swap dealer and a de minimis. What was this, you know, if you were less than a certain level, you didn't have to register as a swap dealer. The special entity provisions were to provide greater protections of whether it was for municipal electric co-op, or just a municipal government, or, as I said, pension fund.
Certainly, and I know my time's limited, I'm sorry. So I guess what we're finding in practice, though, is that people are pulling back from entering into these agreements, and so my bottom line is, H.R. 1038, you feel, in its narrow scope, a supportable measure?
Well, I haven't read it in detail, so I want to stay away from that. But let me just say, I think the policy issue that you'll be addressing is the protection of those entities, those protections, those sales practice protections, those that you want to be at that level. We did use our exemptive authority to make it easier.
Let me ask, I'm sorry, let me ask on that. Has there been a problem in the past? What role did public power companies play in the crisis we've seen before then?
They didn't play a role, or any material role, except for they were the losers, in a sense, by a crisis. Their jobs and their markets were hurt. I think that what we did was, we recognized this, we gave exemptive authority, we raised the de minimis, meaning you don't have to register as a swap dealer unless you do more than $800 million of transactions with special entities. And we did that because the one comment, the one comment letter we got on this is, gave us, you know, a ratio to make it one-tenth of the overall de minimis. So we were reacting to comment letters as well. At the time the comment letter came in, they suggested 300 million. We went to 800 million. But again, I respect that some of these rural electric cooperatives think it should be higher.
Yeah, we're looking to level the playing field with the independent utilities as well, which have $8 billion. We... What they're running into is that they don't believe that what is called the no-action letter gives them enough certainty to be able to operate. This would be like, you know, driving through a town where the speed limit says 25 miles an hour, but everybody says you can go 50. Well, you don't know if they're going to enforce that or not. So the no-action letter that says that they can go up to the 800, does that, do you believe that really provides them the certainty they need? Or is such a finding in law?
The history of our regulatory system, these no-action letters have given people a lot of confidence. I understand the metaphor, but I think it's more than that. We don't bring, the staff recommends not to bring an enforcement action. The commission doesn't then sort of impose, without a lot of public notice, and I think we've maybe withdrawn two or three no-action letters in the last 20 or 30 years. But then we do it, and people know it, and it's public.
The input we're getting is that people are pulling back and drawing out of it. So I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, gentleman. Ms. Harser, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Gensler, for being here with us and for working and listening to people as you have implemented these rules. And I have heard of some positive outcomes, and people are feeling like that you are being responsive. And so, I don't know if we're completely there, all the concerns are lied, but I know you're trying, so thank you for that. I wanted to ask a little bit about MF Global, kind of switch topics just a little bit, because I have a lot of constituents in my district that were impacted by that. I know we're kind of winding up that situation there, but I wonder, first of all, if you could kind of give your perspective on how that happened and kind of summarize the recent findings and suggestions for changes, to see that that doesn't happen again?
One, I want to thank you, and there's always more work to be done, so if there's issues, we want to address them. On MF Global, and I don't know if you're aware, within days after the collapse of MF Global and as it turned to a possible enforcement action involving senior executives of MF Global, including John Corzine, who I once had worked with, now 15 years ago, at Goldman Sachs, I stepped aside and am not participating and have not participated in these last 18 months or so since that occurred. But certainly, we could take that question back. John Riley is here and could get it back. Commissioner Summers heads up from the commission to get your details that you just asked about.
Okay. Well, the committee here has been aware of a recent internal report conducted by the CFTC lawyers on whether you were required to withdraw from matters involving MF Global, and the committee has seen recent press, which essentially said you were not required to withdraw, and from a legal and ethical perspective, your participation in commission matters involving MF Global were not improper. As part of the oversight mandate of this committee, you know, we have an obligation to understand fully this, including the contents of the December 13, 2012 memo. So I wondered if you could please provide a copy of the memo by the end of this week?
Sure. I think it's actually on our website, but we will certainly get it to you directly.
Great. And has this internal report altered your daily activities involving into the investigation or subsequent rule proposals for customer protection?
I have, it has certainly changed my involvement. I'm not in any way participating in that investigation. With regard to rulemaking, rulemakings of general applicability, I've been involved with that, voted on the proposals as staff recommended those proposals last October, which have broad applicability to the marketplaces.
Okay, great. There's been another recent press report about a possible serious data breach at the commission surrounding the OCE net program run by the former chief economist, who's now a professor at MIT. So how familiar were you with how this program operated during its existence, and what are you doing to investigate what happened?
We have had, for many years, well before I was at the commission, a chief economist office that works and does research on data, but also uses, from time to time, outside consultants, academics, that are then credentialed in to maintain that confidential information. In December, it came to our attention, somebody contacted us and said they saw a research report by one academic, and though that research report didn't name any specific data by any one market participant, they wanted to know, "How does that work?" And we started looking at it immediately, and I promptly directed that we should suspend any of the outside consultants, because what we found, that there were some concerns about internal controls, about whether they were fully documented as, you know, signed their non-disclosure agreements and things like that. We also promptly referred it to our inspector general. We've been conducting a management review, but we also see the benefit of having an independent IG look at it as well.
Okay. Did you know how OCE net operated?
I've learned a lot about it since December.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Gentleman yields back. Ms. Hudson, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a cosponsor, along with my friend from New York, Mr. Maloney, of one of the bills being con- being considered before the House Agriculture Committee, I appreciate the opportunity to hear the testimony of Chairman Gensler, and look forward to the testimony of our future panel. The Swaps Regulatory Improvement Act, H.R. 992 SPM, which we introduced on Wednesday last week, along with two bipartisan colleagues in the House Financial Services Committee, amends a provision of the Dodd-Frank Act, which sought to prevent risky swap activities of banks from being eligible for a federal bailout via FDIC insurance or capital infusions from the Federal Reserve. While we believe this provision was proposed in good faith, it simply does not prevent the risk that the author has intended. Moreover, this provision of the bill will cause many American financial institutions to operate at significant disadvantage to foreign competitors. Federal Reserve Chairman Ben Bernanke, former Federal Reserve Chairman Paul Volcker, who is also chairman of the President's Economic Recovery Advisory Board, and former FDIC Chairman Sheila Baer, have all raised concerns about Section 716. With me today, letters from the above-mentioned financial and economic leaders, which illustrate their views on this particular section. Without objection, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit them into the record.
So without objections, you submitted?
Thank you. I should also point out that 18 Democrats, colleagues from the House Financial Services Committee, including the ranking member Maxine Waters and former chairman Barney Frank, wrote that they supported the bill that addressed the issues with Section 716 in the last Congress, which is identical to H.R. 992 in this Congress. I'd also like to add that letter for the record, Mr. Chairman.
No objection.
Just last month, on February 26, 2013, Chairman Bernanke testified before the Senate Banking Committee that Dodd, quote, Dodd-Frank is a very big, complicated piece of legislation, and an area providing difficult is the push-out provision for derivatives. The next day, February 27, when testifying before the House Financial Services Committee, Chairman Bernanke elaborated on the need for Section 716 reform and stated, and I quote, "It was not evident that Section 716 makes the company as a whole safer, and what we do see is that it will likely increase costs to people who use the derivatives and make it more difficult for the bank to compete with foreign competitors who can provide a more complete set of services." With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to use the balance of my time to ask Chairman Gensler about his concerns with Section 716. Chairman Gensler, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, and thank you for your time. Given the statements from Fed Chairman Bernanke and former Fed Chairman, which I provided today, do you agree that Section 716 needs to be reformed?
I don't have a particularly developed view on 716, partly because it's under the Federal Reserve side, and we have so much we're focused on. And what we have, and we do know, that of the, we know facts on the ground, 73 registered swap dealers, the vast majority of them are not insured depository institutions. The vast majority are actually affiliates already, which would have already been, this 716 pushes things out. I'd make an observation, the vast majority of the swap dealers registered with us in the last two months actually are not the banks themselves. 30 of them are foreign, but even amongst the other 45, the majority of those are the affiliates already. And I think 716 doesn't go into effect for another year or two, but again, I'm not as close to it.
Would you consider it an overreach in the authority? Or do you think, would you categorize it that way? Do you think?
You mean the original statute? I'm sorry?
Yeah, 716.
No, I think, as I remember it, it was a judgment of those who worked on it at the time, that certain transactions, energy and non-interest rate derivatives, as well as certain credit default swaps, would be put in the affiliates. The actual facts on the ground are, many of these are in affiliates. I think the largest dealers right now, the Goldman Sachs's and the Deutsche Banks and so forth, do have energy affiliates, because that's how they chose to organize themselves. And I could get back to you to look at our list to see how many, how they're organized.
I appreciate that. You mentioned the international folks, to your knowledge, are any international jurisdictions proposing or implementing any type of swaps, desk, push-out provisions similar to this?
I'm not aware of any, sir.
Okay. As I see my time's dwindling, Mr. Chairman, I'll just extend back to the balance of my time. Thank you.
Chairman Yields back the balance of his time. We do have a second panel, and had not intended to do a second round of questioning, but with unanimous consent, Mr. Maloney from New York must one other question, so Chairman is recognized for two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Chairman Gensler, I just wanted to ask you, I know you spoke a little bit about the cross-border harmonization efforts that you're engaged in, and I'm curious on your view on the status of that. I know you mentioned it before, but I think I may have missed some of what you said. But in particular, I'm curious about, are there areas of disharmonization that would create regulatory arbitrage opportunities that worry you?
There are. We've made tremendous progress with the European Union, Canada, and Japan, and though we have other jurisdictions like Australia and Hong Kong, Singapore are always in air when we meet, when we do these things, frankly, they're just, we're further along with Europe particularly. Where I would raise the greatest policy difference that we just haven't locked in yet is, after the transaction and before the transaction, in the U.S., the public gets a benefit of some transparency. Europe has that in front of their parliament right now. I think they're going to do it. There seems to be the consensus to do it, but they're not there yet. And then this other thing is, is there's many jurisdictions, whether it's the Cayman Islands or others, that are probably not going to do things. And so that's where we want to make sure that if a U.S. financial institution is guaranteeing their affiliate, let's say, in the Cayman Islands or something, that risk is going to come right back here. It's going to be, unfortunately, our markets, our taxpayers, that aren't supposed to stand behind it, but, you know, have that risk. And we think that we need to at least say that if it's guaranteed affiliate, we'll look to substituted compliance, we'll look to home country rules if they're comparable, but if they're not comparable, then it's got to be, you know, we got to look to Dodd-Frank. Thank you. Oh, you're back, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Chairman Gensler, thank you very much. Excellent testimony again. We appreciate it, and thank you and your team for coming and visiting with us. We've got lots of things to talk about as we move forward, and so I appreciate you.
I truly, it's always an honor to be here, and though Member Scott didn't think so, I really do enjoy coming here.
Well, thank you. You may need to run for elected office at some point, time with those skills.
No, no, no. That's for you all.
All right. Now, I'd like to introduce our second panel. Thank you, Mr. Gensler. While they're moving their way forward, I'll do the introductions. First off, we'll have Honorable Kenneth E. Benson, acting president, CEO of Securities Industry and Financial Markets Association here in D.C. We've got Mr. Jim Colby, Assistant Treasurer, Honeywell International, Inc., Marstown, New Jersey, on behalf of the Coalition for Derivatives End Users. We have Mr. Terrence Nalty, General Manager and CEO of Owensboro Municipal Utilities, Owensboro, Kentucky, on behalf of the American Public Power Association. We have Mr. Larry Thompson, General Counsel, Depository Trust and Clearing Corporation, New York, New York. We have Ms. Marie Holland, President, CEO, Financial Executives International and Financial Executives Research Foundation here in Washington, on behalf of the Coalition for Derivatives End Users. And we have finally, Mr. Wallace Turberville, Senior Fellow, Deimos, New York, New York, on behalf of the Americans for Financial Reform. We got everybody seated, the right name tags up? All right. So, Mr. Benson, you're now recognized for five minutes. That's your pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Honorable Committee, on behalf of SIFMA, I appreciate the opportunity to testify on several important legislative improvements to Title VII of the Dodd-Frank Act that this committee is considering. As you know, the Dodd-Frank Act created a broad new regulatory regime for derivative products, commonly referred to as swaps. However, if Title VII is implemented incorrectly, it may cause more harm than good. We believe that appropriate sequencing of Title VII rules and coordination is critical to the successful implementation of the act. In addition, we encourage the regulators to harmonize their rules so that similar products will be subject to similar rules. I'd like to focus my testimony on five specific pieces of legislation that we understand the committee may take up in the near future. First, the swaps push-out rule was added to the Dodd-Frank Act at a late stage in the Senate, not debated in the House at all. It would force banks to push out certain swap activities into separately capitalized affiliates and subsidiaries. As has been mentioned already at this hearing, this provision was opposed at the time and continues to be opposed by then, by Chairman Bernanke of the Federal Reserve, as well as former Chairman of the FDIC, Sheila Baer. We believe that we create increased systemic risk and significantly increased cost to banks providing customers with swap products at the expense of those customers. Last week, Congressman Holgren and Heim, among others, introduced bipartisan legislation to modify this provision, which we strongly support. Second, with respect to cross-border, the CFTC and the SEC have not yet finalized rules clarifying their interpretation of which swap activities will be subject to U.S. regulation and which will be subject to foreign regulations. The result has been a significant uncertainty in the international marketplace, and due to the CFTC's proposed guidance, a reluctance of foreign market participants to trade with U.S.-registered swap dealers until that uncertainty is resolved. Last Congress, Congressman Heim and Garrett introduced bipartisan legislation that would provide clarity on this issue, and we understand that the committee is considering legislation and based upon drafts that we have been informed of, we believe appropriately mandates joint rulemaking, as well as providing for coordination on a cross-border basis with our G20 partners. I would like to mention, in addition to that, risk of fragmentation that this committee should be aware of, and that is with respect to the European Union and its recent proposal for what's known as CRD IV, which is the European Union's implementation of Basel III. As proposed by the European Union, this provision would create an exemption under certain Basel III capital calculations for swaps between EU-supervised banks and EU non-financial end users, which would create even further fragmentation on top of that, which we see coming out of the CFTC's cross-border guidance, and again undermine the principles of the G20 of trying to have uniform standards and rules across all jurisdictions. Third, the Dodd-Frank Act requires a subset of the most standardized swaps to be traded on an exchange or a new platform known as Swap Execution Facility. This is something where the CFTC has come out with a proposed rule, yet the SEC has not put out, as has the SEC, but they're very different in their approach. And in particular, our concern is with the CFTC's proposal to have a minimum mandatory request for quotes that we believe actually undermines the intent of this provision to the detriment of the customers. And in our case, our asset management group, and so these are the people that the provision would seek to help, believe that this actually would impede best execution for the benefit of their customers, which include everyday investors. And we think it's appropriate that the Congress take up legislation similar to that, which was passed last year by the House Financial Services Committee. With respect to inter-affiliate swaps, again, this is something where the act was not clear on. Congressman Stivers has introduced legislation that would clarify inter-affiliate swaps, which are a critical part of risk management functions of institutions, and we think the committee should take that up. Lastly, it is critical that regulators carefully balance the benefits of swap-related regulation and the potential decrease in liquidity and increased cost to customers using hedging activities. We think it's appropriate for cost-benefit analysis. In fact, this is consistent with the Obama Administration's Executive Order 13563, which asks agencies to follow similar cost-benefit analysis that executive branch agencies and departments already follow under statute. The SEC, I might add, has already waved into this. We think it's appropriate for the CFTC as well, and we appreciate Congressman Conway's bill that would bring this into implementation. With that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to testify on behalf of our members of SIFMA, and I'm happy to answer your questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. You may proceed when you're ready, Mr. Colby.
Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member Peterson, and other members of the committee, thank you for inviting me to testify at this important hearing. I'm an Assistant Treasurer at Honeywell International, and today speak on behalf of Honeywell and other commercial end-users, including members of the Coalition for Derivatives End Users. Honeywell is a diversified technology and manufacturing leader, serving customers worldwide with aerospace products and services, control technologies for buildings, homes, and industry, turbochargers, and performance materials. Honeywell's growth is driven by technologies that address some of the world's toughest challenges, such as energy efficiency, clean energy generation, safety and security, globalization, and customer productivity. Honeywell is truly a global company, with more than 50% of our sales outside of the United States, and we are therefore exposed to market risks from changes in interest rates, foreign exchange rates, and commodity prices. When appropriate, we hedge exposures through the use of derivative contracts. The purpose of our hedging activities is to eliminate risks that we cannot control, allowing us to focus on our core strengths, namely delivering high-quality products to our customers. We do not use derivatives for speculative purposes. I'll provide some examples to demonstrate how we use derivatives. We sell satellite and launch vehicle inertial measurement units manufactured in Florida to customers in Germany. Europe is a key growth market for commercial space products, and in order to qualify for consideration on certain opportunities, we may be required to enter into contracts denominated in euros, even though all costs of production are incurred in U.S. dollars. The period for this type of contract can span multiple years, during which changes in the value of the euro versus the U.S. dollar can significantly impact its economic viability. To mitigate this risk, we may enter into a forward contract to sell an amount of euros equal to our net exposure to lock in the market rate. Honeywell sells catalysts and absorbers manufactured in multiple U.S. manufacturing plants to customers in the refining industry. As the refinery starts up, a supply of catalysts is required to operate it, and Honeywell could arrange a catalyst supply agreement with the customer as part of the overall package. During contract negotiations, some European customers will require sales contracts to be denominated in euros, whereas all costs of production are incurred in U.S. dollars. To mitigate this risk, Honeywell may enter into a forward contract to sell an amount of euros equal to our net exposure to lock in the market rate. Honeywell carefully manages its ratio of fixed-to-floating rate debt in order to lower its overall cost of debt while providing sufficient interest rate certainty to accurately forecast and manage interest expense. Floating rate debt has historically been cheaper than fixed-rate debt, but cannot be easily issued in longer maturities, thereby exposing Honeywell to refinancing risk. Honeywell uses interest rate derivatives to convert a portion of its fixed-rate debt to floating, thereby creating a synthetic floating-rate note with a longer-term maturity than could be issued directly in the capital markets. With compliance deadlines looming, Honeywell is concerned with the direction in which certain rules appear to be heading. We strongly support two bills referred to your committee. H.R. 634 would exempt transactions in which a non-financial end-user is a party from margin requirements, whereas H.R. 677 would exempt inter-affiliate transactions of end-users from clearing requirements. The margin bill is of particular interest to Honeywell. In the Dodd-Frank Act, Congress made clear that end-users were not to be subject to margin requirements. Nonetheless, regulations proposed by prudential banking regulators could require end-users to post margin. This stems directly from what they view to be a legal obligation under Title VII. While the regulations proposed by the CFTC are preferable, they do not provide end-users with the certainty that legislation offers. According to a Coalition for Derivatives End Users survey, a 3% initial margin requirement could reduce capital spending by as much as $5.1 to $6.7 billion among S&amp;P 500 companies alone, and cost $100,000 to $130,000 jobs. What does this mean for Honeywell? We had approximately $2 billion of hedging contracts outstanding at year-end that would be defined as a swap under Dodd-Frank. Applying the 3% initial margin and a 10% variation margin implies a potential margin requirement of $260 million. Cash deposited in a margin account cannot be productively deployed in our business, and therefore detracts from Honeywell's financial performance and the ability to promote economic growth and protect American jobs. The margin bill does not undermine Dodd-Frank. It helps ensure that the final act and rules function as intended, and that commercial end-users do not face the same regulatory burden as those who speculate and create systemic risk. Not only did commercial end-users not contribute to the financial crisis, but they were a safe haven during the financial turmoil. Investors who were afraid to invest in the debt of financial institutions purchased the debt of companies like Honeywell, companies that prudently use derivatives to manage and reduce risk, and who manage the financial crisis without need for government assistance. In conclusion, we need Congress to enact legislation so that end-users like Honeywell will continue to have the ability to manage risk without having margin requirements imposed on us. Thank you for inviting me to testify today. We greatly appreciate the support that the committee has provided, and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. Mr. Nalty, you may begin when you're ready.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Terrence Nalty. I'm a General Manager and CEO of Owensboro Municipal Utilities. Prior to this position, I spent 15 years in senior management at utility-affiliated trading companies and at a financial entity. I thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the American Public Power Association, of which we are a member. OMU provides water and telecommunications and electric services to over 26,000 customers in Owensboro, the third-largest city in Kentucky. We operate a 540-megawatt coal-fired power plant that produces some of the lowest-cost power in the Midwest and Southeast. Approximately 63% of our electric revenues are derived from the wholesale market. Traditionally, we have hedged future wholesale electric revenues with bilateral fix-for-floating swaps at liquid trading points that are in close proximity to the point of physical delivery. These swaps hedge future wholesale revenue and consequently protect our customer owners from the wholesale price fluctuations associated with both long-term and short-term market movements. By hedging this future revenue stream, we can ensure stable and low electric rates. To limit our credit risk and reduce cost, we would enter into financial swap transactions with the most active and credit-worthy counterparties in the physical markets we sell into. Most of these counterparties are affiliates of investor-owned utilities. We also have limited-enabling agreements with financial entities. With these financial entities, and more importantly, the utility-affiliated traders With these financial entities, and more importantly, the utility-affiliated trader trading counterparties, OMU was able to hedge its position with virtually no cash reserve requirements due to the strength of our balance sheet. However, CFTC regulations implementing the Dodd-Frank Act have made this pragmatic and conservative hedging strategy very difficult. Under the regulations, our non-swapped dealer counterparties can engage in just $25 million per year in swap dealing activities with government-owned utilities and other special entities before being classified as a swap dealer. Even OMU's relatively small hedge position has a notional value in excess of $200 million. Also, the comparable limit for swap dealing activities with other nongovernmental entities is $8 billion. As a result, two of our three largest trading counterparties informed us that they would no longer transact financial swaps with us for fear of becoming a swap dealer under the Act. This decision has forced us to change our risk management strategy in two ways. First, we can now only use financial entities willing to register as a swap dealer. Our hedging transactions have migrated from utility-affiliated companies to these financial entities, and we've seen the bid-ask spreads widen. Second, to avoid these wider spreads and define liquidity where we hedge, we have been forced to the ICE and NYMEX trade platforms to manage our position. Both these futures platforms require cash reserves to meet initial and maintenance margin. This means OMU can no longer take advantage of the negotiated collateral arrangements. As a result, our Board of Directors has required us to establish incremental reserves of $10 million to ensure that the utility can meet margin calls associated with its hedged position. If this $10 million in incremental cash reserves were funded from our customers, the result would be approximately 10% rate increase. The CFTC in October provided no action letter, which we heard about this morning, that moved the threshold from $25 million to $800 million. However, the letter has imposed a number of new and additional requirements, and as a result, the position of our lost trading counterparties has not changed. In response, just this Monday, HR 1038, the Public Power Risk Management Act of 2013, was introduced. The legislation provides narrow targeted relief for utility operations-related swaps for government-owned entities. The legislation carefully defines which entity would qualify as a utility special entity and the types of swaps that could and could not be considered a utility operations-related swap. In conclusion, the protection the CFTC is trying to afford through the $25 million special entity sub-threshold are not needed for government-owned utilities. We are well-versed in the markets and rely on these swaps solely to manage price and operational risks. A failure to allow the narrow exclusion provided under the Public Power Risk Management Act will limit our members' ability to hedge against risk and lead to higher cost for the customers they serve. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Nalti. You may proceed when you're ready, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Larry Thompson, General Counsel of the Depository Trust and Clearing Corporation, DTCC, a participant-owned and governed cooperative that serves as a critical financial market utility for the U.S. and global financial markets. DTCC strongly supports HR 742, the Swap Data Repository Clearinghouse Indemnification Correction Act of 2013. I want to thank Congressmen Crawford and Maloney for their leadership on this issue. I'd like to focus on three points today. First, I will briefly review DTCC's role in the swaps market. Second, I will explain the indemnification provision in Dodd-Frank and the problems it poses for swap data sharing and systemic risk oversight. And third, I will discuss a legislative remedy to resolve this matter. DTCC has a long history serving the over-the-counter swaps market, and going back to 2005, we're the only party that has run a swap data repository. More recently, we began operating a U.S. swap data repository called DDR, which is a swap data repository registered with the CFTC under Dodd-Frank. The DDR began accepting trade data from clients, the first data financial institutions began trade reporting under Dodd-Frank. On December 31st, we were the first and only registered swap data repository to publish real-time price information. DDR is also the only registered swap data repository to offer repository and public reporting across all five asset classes. Earlier this week, we also announced that DTCC's registration application to establish a Japanese OTC derivatives trade repository was approved. DDRJ is the first trade repository to be approved and established for the Japanese market. We also have a trade repository registered with the FSA in the U.K. called DDRL. Turning to my second point today, the indemnification provision in Dodd-Frank requires a registered swap data repository. As a condition of sharing information with a foreign regulator, the first receive a written statement and agreement with that regulator will abide by certain confidentiality requirements and indemnify both the SDR and the regulator for any expenses arising from the litigation relating to the information provided. We believe that those provisions are complicated and unworkable. First, many foreign countries and their legal systems do not recognize the concept of indemnification. Even where they do, many foreign governments cannot or will not agree to indemnify foreign private third parties such as U.S.-registered SDR or a foreign government. In order to access the necessary information without indemnification, each jurisdiction may have to establish a local trade repository. A proliferation of local trade repositories would undermine the ability of regulators to obtain timely, consolidated, and accurate view of the global marketplace. The implementation of this provision will also undo the existing data-sharing system that was developed through the OTC Derivatives Regulators Forum, or ODRF, and the Committee on Payment and Settlement Systems of the International Organization of Securities Commissions, known as CPSS IASCO. For nearly three years, regulators globally have followed the ODRF guidelines to access the information they need for systemic risk oversight. It is the standard that DTCC uses to provide regulators around the world with access to global credit default swap and interest rate data stored in its voluntary trade repositories, and it has worked well to date. Turning to my third and final point, during the 112th Congress, the SEC testified in support of a legislative solution, and three of the five CFTC commissioners publicly endorsed the need for legislation to clarify this provision of Dodd-Frank. Furthermore, a bipartisan coalition of more than 40 lawmakers in the House signed on as co-sponsors of legislation similar to HR 742. The Dodd-Frank indemnification requirement has not been copied by regulators overseas. In fact, the European Market Infrastructure Regulation, known as EMEA, considered and rejected the indemnification requirement. Congress should enact HR 742 to quickly ensure regulatory comity with international counterparts. By passing this legislation to ensure that technical corrections to indemnification are addressed, Congress will help create the proper environment for the development of a global trade repository system to support systemic risk management and oversight. Thank you, and I await your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Holland, you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Chairman Lucas, Ranking Member Peterson and members of the committee. I want to thank you for inviting me to testify today. I am the President and CEO of Financial Executives International, professional association of 15,000 senior-level financial executives from over 8,000 companies across all industries. For more than 30 years, I worked in the Treasury function of several major corporations, including Westinghouse, Citicorp, ABN Amro, and led KPMG's Treasury practice for non-financial institutions. Today, I speak on behalf of FEI and the Coalition for Derivatives End-Users. The Coalition includes more than 300 companies and trade associations, representing thousands of end-users. United in one respect, they use derivatives to manage risk, not create it. Corporate treasurers utilize over-the-counter derivatives to hedge and mitigate business risk, not for speculative purposes, which is why these end-users should not be regulated in a way that imposes unnecessary costs or restrictions. Congress heard our concerns in several respects and provided for key exemptions in Dodd-Frank for end-users. Unfortunately, over the two-and-a-half years since Dodd-Frank was enacted, it appears that these end-user exceptions are not being upheld in the rulemaking process. This is especially evident in the proposed margin rule and in the lack of clarity around interaffiliate swaps and the use of Treasury hedging centers. Despite these issues, the compliance clock keeps ticking toward imminent deadlines. The Coalition strongly supports two pieces of legislation that have been referred to your committee, HR 634 and HR 677. We would like to thank the committee and the full House for supporting similar bills last Congress. Today, I will focus my comments on the Interaffiliate Swap Clarification Act, HR 677, introduced by Congressmen Stivers, Fudge, Gibson, and Moore. This legislation would ensure that interaffiliate derivative trades do not face the same demanding regulatory requirements as market-facing swaps. This bill also ensures that end-users are not penalized for using Treasury hedging centers to manage their commercial risk. There are two serious problems facing end-users that need to be addressed. First, under CFTC's proposed rule, financial end-users would have to clear internal trades between affiliates unless they post variation margin or met specific requirements for an exception. Financial end-users, such as pension plans, captive finance affiliates, and mutual life insurance companies, are used derivatives exactly the same way that non-financial end-users do. If these end-users have to post variation margin, there is little point to exempt interaffiliate trades from clearing requirements as the costs could be similar. And let's not forget the larger point. Internal end-user trades do not create systemic risk and hence should not be regulated the same as those trades that do. Second, roughly one-quarter of end-users we surveyed execute swaps through an affiliate. Many companies find it more efficient to manage their risk centrally instead of having hundreds of affiliates making trades in an uncoordinated fashion. Using this type of hedging unit centralizes expertise, strengthens financial controls, increases transparency, and improves price. These advantages led me to centralize the Treasury function at Westinghouse while I was there. However, the regulators' interpretation of the Dodd-Frank Act confronts non-financial end-users with the choice: either clear all of their trades or dismantle their Treasury hedging centers and find a new way to manage risk. Stated differently, this problem threatens to deny the end-user clearing exception to those who have chosen to hedge their risk in an efficient, highly effective, and risk-reducing way. It is difficult to believe that this is the result Congress hoped to achieve. For these reasons, we hope Congress will pass HR 677. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I look forward to the questions.
Thank you. And the chair now recognizes Mr. Turberville whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas and members of the committee. Thanks for having me here. My name's Wallace Turberville. I'm a Senior Fellow at Demos, which is a national public policy organization working to reduce political and economic inequality, advancing a vision of a country where we all have an equal say in our democracy and have an equal chance in our economy. I'm talking today on behalf of Americans for Financial Reform, which is a coalition of more than 250 organizations which have come together to advocate for the reform of the financial sector. I'd like to thank Marcus Stanley, AFR's Policy Director, for assisting with the preparation of my testimony. I come to this testimony with a strangely appropriate set of experiences. First of all, I was born near Owensboro, Kentucky, which is not exactly qualification. But I did practice law in municipal bonds and worked with many municipal utilities for many years, and then went on to Goldman Sachs to work in the Municipal Bond Department for many years. After being at Goldman Sachs in Europe and elsewhere, I moved on to international infrastructure finance and ran a derivatives risk service company for seven years as CEO. Then, two-and-a-half years ago, I decided to devote myself 100% of my time to thinking and writing about the reform of the financial markets. Today, the committee is considering seven pieces of legislation. Six of these would amend Title VII, and the cost-benefit analysis would amend another part of the Act. The Americans for Financial Reform oppose six of these legislative proposals. We do not oppose the matter that was discussed by the gentleman from DTCC. In truth, there's no urgency for technical amendments to Title VII at this time. This may seem surprising given the length of the scope of the legislation, but in fact, what's happening is, in large measure, as Chairman Gensler pointed out, many of these issues are being dealt with on an ongoing basis. Given the complexity of the swap space and the approach of Dodd-Frank in relying on regulatory expertise to craft rules, Congress should think about whether it's premature to do some of these things. Specifically, there are several issues at play here. One is the Business Risk Management Section, Bill 634. Now, as has been talked about several times today, the whole issue of end-user margin is that the CFTC has not required end-users to post margin. But the risks that are associated with swaps that are margined are debt, pure and simple. They're credit extensions. So the fact of the matter is that the prudential regulators have said it would be prudent for a bank who is doing a swap to set a threshold or a limit on how much debt they extend. To do otherwise would be to suggest that it would be prudent for banks to extend unlimited credit, which I think is hard to address. There are a couple of other points I'd like to make quickly before we just move on. One is associated with the whole notion of the push-out provision. As best I can tell, the biggest concern about the push-out provision is that it might be more expensive to work through an affiliate by some of the banks. As Chairman Gensler pointed out, many of the banks are working through affiliates in this area. I want to point out that the Federal Reserve tells us that JP Morgan has 3,391 affiliates in its organization, B of A 2,091, Goldman Sachs 3,115, Morgan Stanley 2,884, and Lehman, before it died, had 2,800. So the banks can manage to work through affiliates. The primary cost associated with the push-out is a cost of capital. If you have to capitalize an affiliate as opposed to relying on the capital of an insured bank, the cost of capital may be higher. But here's the point: that cost of capital may be higher. That might even cost some costs to be passed along to counterparties. But the alternative is to have the people of the United States grant a subsidy through their guarantees of these banks, and that is an inappropriate way to do things. I'm perfectly happy to talk about all of these other provisions, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I now recognize myself for five minutes, and I direct my first question, I guess, to Mr. Benson and Mr. Nalti. The derivatives markets touch virtually every aspect of the economy: food we eat, the price of the pump, our mortgages, credit cards, our retirement savings. With this in mind, do you think the CFTC rulemaking, plural, since Dodd-Frank became law, are inherently flawed due to the lack of sufficient cost-benefit analysis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the question. I don't know that I would go as far as to say they are all inherently flawed, but I think they are missing a key component in how you craft a rule as other departments and agencies, either under statute or in adherence to the President's executive order, look at how that rule is going to be crafted, what the costs, what the benefits are. And our view is that we don't really have an understanding as to what that is with respect to the CFTC rule proposals. And so the whole idea behind cost-benefit analysis is to really help guide the agency in that rulemaking and to come out with what works best in trying to achieve that balance. And that has not been the case with the CFTC.
Mr. Nalti, would you like to add anything to that?
Mr. Naughtley, would you like to add anything to that?
I share my colleagues' concerns. As it relates to the public power entities, the benefits are dubious, if any, for the treatment that we're receiving. To classify us as a special entity solely because of the fact that we are a public entity doesn't recognize the fact that we manage the same risks in the same markets as our colleagues in the investor-owned utility space. We're very capable of managing and understand those risks, and although we've worked with the CFTC to make them aware of these concerns, we've not seen, and they have taken some action, we've not seen the end benefit that we need, which is this exemption that we're asking for.
Speaking of that, Mr. Naughtley, in your testimony you stated CFTC's no-action letter in response to your industry's petition to eliminate the special-entity threshold has not given your would-be counterparties enough confidence to resume doing business with public-power utilities. Do you think, or bureaucrats having essentially eliminated an avenue for which you to manage your risk, do you think your regulators up here really know how better to run your business in Owensboro than you do?
Well, I think that's a risk, Congressman and Chairman, that you get when you use a broad brush to paint over an issue like this. And we certainly understand how to run our business. We're watching out for our ratepayers. And to take away this avenue that we've used traditionally, and by the way, the way that the market is designed, it was designed to allow and promoted the use of swaps in order to provide price certainty, both for buyers and sellers, in these RTO markets. So, you know, I think we do understand our business, and we can manage our own risk on an even playing field with investor-owned utilities.
Mr. Benson, one last question. I understand there's what might be described as a brewing disconnect between the U.S. and the EU on the Basel III derivatives rules. Could you expand on this developing issue and the potential impact on U.S. financial institutions, end-users for that matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I mentioned in my oral testimony, the European Union is in the process of finalizing the adoption of their implementation of Basel III, which is the International Capital Accords that the U.S., all of the G20 countries have agreed to implement. The U.S. is going through its own rulemaking, principally through the Federal Reserve, to implement Basel III capital standards. The European Union's proposal, which is called CRD IV, Capital Regulation Directive IV, would exempt swaps between EU-supervised banks or dealers, who are otherwise subject to the Basel III requirements under EU supervision, with swaps that they engage in with EU non-financial end-users, as it relates to something called the Credit Valuation Adjustment. So it's an advanced methodology for establishing a capital requirement against that swap. What that means is that for swaps, if this goes to fruition, which it appears that it will, what that means is that the capital charge that EU-supervised banks would have to take to engage in a swap with an EU non-financial end-user would be different and less than a non-EU bank, that could be a U.S. bank, an Asian bank, a Canadian bank, in engaging with those EU end-users, and frankly, would be a disadvantage presumably to non-EU end-users as well, in terms of a competitive disadvantage. I think the other, and let me say, there is a problem with the CVA calculation, the calibration, no question about that, and I think that's why this happened. But importantly, this results in a further fragmentation of trying to have a uniform standard set across the G20 countries, and in this case, in the Basel rule. So this is a real problem that we believe U.S. regulators and global regulators through the Basel Committee, Financial Stability Board, and others need to engage on.
Thank you. My time has expired. The Chair now recognizes the gentleman from Georgia for five minutes. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Benson, let me start with you. Concerning extraterritorial application of the Dodd-Frank rules, I gathered in your testimony that you have concerns with that, and I'd like for you to tell us the most negative consequences that you see for the marketplace if Congress doesn't address this.
Well, I think there are multiple negative consequences, Mr. Scott. Number one, as you have, in this interim period where the CFTC came out with its guidance, and really, our views got ahead of the curve, not waiting to do this with the SEC, which is still in a rulemaking process. And remember, this is pivots off of the definition of what is a swap, what is a swap dealer, which was a joint rulemaking as prescribed by Congress under the Act, and yet the CFTC went on its own to do this without doing it in a joint rulemaking with the SEC. But also, it got out in front, and we believe, in lack of coordination with our other regulators around the globe, as was talked about with Chairman Gensler earlier today. And that's created conflict, not just with those regulators, but it's created conflict in the marketplace. And I think you referenced this in your comments, Mr. Scott. I was actually in Tokyo on October 12th, when the first instance of swap requirements were going to take effect, at the World Bank and IMF meetings, a program with the Japanese Security Dealers Association. And at that time, I was hearing from both U.S. and non-U.S. firms that they were getting pushback from non-U.S. swap dealer counterparties, that they weren't clear whether they would deal with someone who's registered as a swap dealer. So it created a market fluctuation that didn't need to exist, and that continues to happen. The second thing I would say is you have a potential for redundancy in conflict between U.S. and non-U.S. rules, where it's not clear who will be required, who will be subject to those rules, and whether or not some dealers will be subject to duplicative or redundant rules, which has no question will have a price and competitive impact. So I think there are a number of things that come out of it. One is market fluctuation. The other is complexity and redundancy and conflict.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson, let me ask you, you talked about the indemnification not being a legal concept that's respected by foreign jurisdictions. And could you share with us why in House Resolution 742 we need to make this change, and if we don't, what those consequences would be? How does that indemnification, not being accepted by foreign jurisdictions, negatively impact?
Thank you, Congressman Scott. First, indemnification basically comes out of U.S. common law, tort law, and a lot of foreign jurisdictions follow civil law, especially in Europe, so that's a concept that they simply don't have. But just here in the U.S., a lot of foreign governments, just like we do, do not allow our governmental authorities to actually indemnify each other. The SEC, when it testified on this issue, actually said that if they had to indemnify a foreign regulator, they couldn't, because U.S. law would not allow them to do it. So if they had to indemnify the CFTC in order to get information, they couldn't do it, which is one of the reasons that they came out in favor of a legislative solution here. We think, as I've said and testified before, that the best way to ensure that these global markets continue to stay global and you don't have local solutions to deal with this issue is to do away with any impediments to fragmentation. And we see indemnification as an impediment to the globalization of the market.
I just have to give one more little question, and there have been scores of economists that argue that excessive speculation in commodities derivatives has been a driving factor in recent radical price swings and market uncertainty. And I'm hearing a lot of this from our Main Street businesses. Do you all believe that excessive speculation is a factor behind the kinds of price swings that we've seen over the last five years? So, you, Mr. Benson, do you believe that?
There's been a lot of academic research in this area, Congressman, over whether or not, to what effect does market speculation impact price? And this goes to the whole question of position limits, and Chairman Gensler talked about that before. We can talk about the rule itself and why we had problems with it, and that gets really more to cost-benefit. But I think what's important is, the academic research is, quite frankly, inconclusive as to the material impact of speculation on actual price. And so I think that's something that regulators, not just in the U.S. but globally, because the other thing we have to remember is, these are commodity markets, you all know better than we, commodity markets are global markets, and they're impacted by various global factors, and that's another thing that has to be taken into consideration.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
The gentleman's time has expired. The Chair recognizes himself for motion. Without objection, I would like to submit the following letters for the record: one from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, supporting H.R. 992; a second from the Illinois Chamber of Commerce, supporting H.R. 992; third, a February 2013 letter from the Japanese Financial Services Agency to the CFTC, expressing their concerns about cross-border rules. Seeing no objection, so ordered. With that, I now recognize the gentleman from California, Mr. Lamoffa, for five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. One question for Mr. Naughtley there. First, Owensboro, isn't that the home of the Waltrip family there? So there's a second question, but...
Congressman, I'm not a NASCAR fan, so I don't know the answer to that question, unfortunately.
Wow, okay.
But I do thank you for your leadership and your sponsorship of our legislation.
The Walters would probably like me to sponsor them somehow, but anyway. I just wanted to drill down a little more on that no-action letter. You'd mentioned that in your comments there, which has, as you mentioned, added additional requirements. But again, does that letter really inspire the confidence that you need to go forward or that your counterparties would as well, which we're gathering a dozen, so...
Well, I think the answer to your question, Congressman, is that the proof is in the pudding. And, you know, while the no-action letter has been in place for quite some time, we've not seen any counterparties come back. And part of the reason is because of the uncertainty around some of the additional requirements and what the CFT tried to clarify in that letter, but mostly because of the compliance risk that those counterparties perceive they would be burdened with. The compliance risk is that if they continue to do business with special entities and somehow trip over the threshold level, they would be pulled in as a swap dealer. And rather than putting in the systems and risk controls within their organizations, many of which are not large swap dealers, we're talking utility-affiliated trading companies, that cost-benefit just doesn't work for them. And so the easiest thing for them to do is to just not trade with special entities.
Limiting options, yes. Maybe we could follow up later and talk about some of those specifics, those requirements. But additionally, I'd like to find out, the largest municipal utility my district has a little under 45,000 customers, and we've been talking, and they're expecting that the reporting requirements under Dodd-Frank are going to require additional staff and costs that, you know, again, a fairly small utility like the one where I'm from can't really bear. I wondered what you might be able to share with us on the effects with Owensboro there.
Well, the reporting requirements are actually the requirements that would be imposed on the swap dealer. And while there are additional reporting requirements for us as municipal utilities, due to the fact that we do transactions that involve swaps, they're not nearly as onerous as those that would be imposed on entities that are trying to avoid being swap dealers. There is a compliance burden, make no doubt about it, for us and for all APPA members that use these derivative markets. We have not quantified exactly how many headcount we're going to have to add, but clearly there's an additional compliance burden for us.
But an even bigger deterrent for your counterparties there, that we'll be looking at that as in a spectrum of things that are going to drive their costs and probably not as likely to do business with you then?
Correct. And as it drives their costs, then they become less competitive as a supplier or a buyer of our products. You know, the real issue for us is that these are costs that are being imposed on our business, the inability to access the markets in an equal way as our investor-owned utility counterparties. And those costs, we have no other choice but to pass those through to ratepayers. And there's really no systemic risk and no benefit to the ratepayer for this penalty.
Yeah, we haven't seen where the risk has been a problem for utilities in this process here, so maybe just make it up in volume. So, thank you. I yield back my time.
The gentleman yields back. The Chair now recognizes the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, gentlemen, thank you for being here today. And Mr. Colby and Ms. Holley, I, along with many of my colleagues, both Democrats and Republicans, have co-sponsored H.R. 634, very similar to a bill that passed the House of Representatives last year, 370 to 24, that allowed end-users who qualify for the clearing exemption to also qualify for the margin exemption. Basically making sure that the cost of the margin exemption is only used where a systemic risk to the financial markets is. Secretary Gensler gave an indication earlier today that he was supportive of that and that he thought that a rule would be coming forward that would be very similar to that. My question for you is, have you heard any timeline on that potential rule? And could you just explain briefly why it's so important to allow end-users to be exempt from the cost of the margin requirements?
Do you want me to start?
Yes, ma'am. Sir, that's fine.
Yeah, sorry. We haven't heard of a very specific timeline being provided. Although the CFTC has indicated in their preliminary ruling that they're supportive of commercial end-users not being required to post margin, the proposed rules by the prudential regulators is very troublesome. And even if the final rules don't require end-users to post initial margin, and if there are high thresholds for variation margin, there are no assurances that in the future those rules might not change and be imposed upon us. The bill does provide such certainty, and it should be noted that Chairman Bernanke has, on the record in front of the Senate Banking Committee, indicated that he would be supportive of such an explicit exemption for end-users.
Mr. Congressman, I would agree with Colby as far as the margin requirement. The issue is, most non-end-users really hedge for the sake of mitigating their risk, especially on the interaffiliate agreements. It's just centralizing, and more Treasuries have moved towards a centralization process. It's the best practice to just be more efficient. I mean, it does not cause systemic risk or counterparty risk. Noise out there. If you think about it, the end-users only make up, as Chairman Gensler mentioned, 9% to 10% of the swap market. The objective of corporates are really just to mitigate their risk and try to efficiently manage that risk and look at the portfolio. My fear is, if there is this margin requirement, that it will cause companies to move away from and not manage their risk, thereby increasing their risk in the marketplace.
Thank you. In terms of the cost side of that question, diverting cash flow from a company's business operations, where we can create jobs and protect jobs and generate a good return for shareholders, is very costly. There's a high opportunity cost. There's a high opportunity cost that, in our opinion, outweighs the small credit mitigation benefits of posting margin. As Chairman Gensler indicated, commercial end users represent 9% of the OTC market, but we create 94% of the jobs. So, the margin bill is going to very slightly impact the 9%, but potentially significantly impact the 94%, which is the one that I think that we care about.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Colby, you bring up an important point there, and 27 months ago, I was in the private sector, and you used two words up here that we don't hear much from regulators, and that's cash flow. And certainly in the private sector, we can't use the same dollar twice at the same time, can we? And that's a...
No, we can't.
And I think that's where the real issue comes in, and where we can help America's economy by making sure that the end user is not subject to that extra cost, because every dollar that's locked up is a dollar that can't be used to expand your business and put Americans back to work. And our goal is to help you get Americans back to work. So, thank you so much. And, Mr. Chairman, I yield the remainder of my time.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Does the gentleman have a request?
Yes, I'd like to ask for one minute, if I could. I wanted to get Mr. Toberville's response to my question on speculation.
Seeing no objection, the chair yields the gentleman one minute, that he therefore yields to the witness.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. The question really is about speculative activity in the futures and swaps markets as it relates to prices on delivery, spot prices. And the connection between the two has to do with the fact that in the futures market or in the swaps market, you're creating a forward curve, which is the expectation that prices are going to rise, fall, or stay the same. There is no question that if speculative activity changes the forward curve for prices, it will change spot prices. For instance, if it appears that the prices are going to rise over time, then spot prices will go up as well, as people withhold from the market, waiting for the prices to rise later. If prices are going to fall, people will put more supply into the market. So, there's no question about that. My colleague here, Mr. Benson, said there were many studies that didn't find any connection. That's like saying that there are many studies that didn't find Pluto until they found Pluto. Once you find Pluto, you got Pluto, the planet, not the dog. So, there have been studies that have found connections. I participated in one that found a connection. And my particular study that I looked at asked the following questions. It's commodity index funds, if you're familiar with those, which they, there's these huge commodity index funds that sort of die and recreate themselves every month in effect. So, all of their futures get sold off, and they buy longer-dated futures. And what we took a look at is whether there was a connection between that period where they do that lengthening of their positions, and they put pressure on the out-years, does that actually cause the forward curve to go up, or does it have an influence on the forward curve going up? And we found that for several commodities, oil, some of the grains, there was a correlation of 99.9% of that rollover period with upward movement pressures on the forward curve. Upper movement pressures on the forward curves means that spot prices are likely to go up. So, the answer is, there has been some good work done on it. It's hard to measure, but there has been measurement of it, and I think that the real conclusion should be, there's not, perhaps it's how much speculation, but the easier thing to find the connection with is what kind of speculation. If you do something every month that pushes, puts pressure out on the forward curve, causing it to go up, then you're going to affect spot prices.
The gentleman's minute has expired. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Tennessee, Mr. Fenchler, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Following up with that, when you said the rollover, are you talking about getting out of the positions and getting longer positions in the market?
That's correct. What happens is, what happens is, a bank like Goldman Sachs, which is one of the major players, has done a swap with somebody like a pension fund or a university fund. And the swap says, the swap is all about the price of futures.
Right.
And what they're doing is, they're financializing. They're creating a synthetic ownership of oil, corn, wheat, soybeans, everything else, synthetic ownership on the part of these funds. But to create the synthetic ownership, the bank then has to go out into the market and replicate that and roll it over every month.
To stay in the market, to stay...
That's right. So, futures expire, this is like ownership which is permanent. So, what happens is that every, the rollover puts pressure on the out-years of the market, which causes, the technical term is, causes the forward curve to go more in cantango, being more in the forced up, and that causes, and that has an effect on prices, because people price over next month's forward price. They have index contracts. Platts, who has oil price index, references that contract, and it's just common sense tells you, you're going to look out there. And I'm actually from Tennessee.
All right. Well, in the issue I have, and I've got a couple of questions from Mr. Benson and Ms. Holland also, but the two words, and being from the private sector and a large family farm background, and have done a lot of marketing and use derivatives often, is the unintended consequences that go with more government and more regulation, and the things that it will do to the market, as we're starting to learn, as we get into Title VII even more. If you, in my opinion, again, knowing the details of a lot of this, if you try to take all of the risk out of the market, then you have no market. You will destroy the market completely. And there's a certain amount of risk that you're going to have. We have to take positions on everything now to make sure we're hedged in order to stay in business. But to Mr. Benson, Section 716 would negatively affect uninsured depository institutions, such as many foreign banks that operate branches in the United States. Would the credit availability from these institutions be impacted if 716 is fully implemented, and why or why not?
Mr. Fenchler, I think that the biggest problem with 716, I'll come back to the point, in our view, and I think this is where Chairman Bernanke is coming from, and I think this is where then Chairwoman Baer was coming from, is that you're taking capital out of the bank, and you're putting it into an affiliate and shifting part of the activity, which otherwise has been under their jurisdiction and prudential jurisdiction and supervision. And so, you're depleting, one, you're depleting capital from the entity that you're regulating, and then you're creating a separate affiliate that you may not have primary supervision over. And so, I think that's where their primary concern is. So, that's why, on the whole, our view is that 716, and their view is that 716 doesn't work and doesn't make sense. I might just add, one thing that Chairman Gensler said is, he thinks it's probably going to come into effect in a year or in two years. It actually is supposed to come into effect on July 21st of this year, but there's been no proposed rulemaking. And in fact, the OCC just recently put out a request, sort of guidance, with a request for firms who would be subject to it to ask for an extension. They do have a conformance or an extension period. To your point with respect to the foreign banks or foreign branch operations, the way the law was crafted is that it applies to insured depository institutions. So, if you're a foreign bank branch or agency that is not operating an insured bank in this country, then it's not at all clear how you're affected by this rule or not, if you read literally off the statute. The Federal Reserve has some flexibility under some existing statutes, but it's not clear that they can make an adjustment. But I think the main point is, is that this is something that causes depletion and shift of capital, that is, and really moves things out of more primary jurisdiction. Congress, at the end, kind of split the thing in half, but some swaps in, some swaps out, and it really doesn't make any sense. And so, that's why I think you're seeing principal regulators saying this ought to be fixed.
Will H.R. 992 provide the fix?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. And one more follow-up question to Ms. Holland. Do you think end users pose a systemic risk?
Do I think they cause systemic risk?
Do they pose a systemic risk to U.S. financial institutions?
No, I do not believe they do at all. In fact, they're just mitigating their risk. They don't cause any systemic risk at all.
Okay. I yield back, Chairman. Thank you very much.
The gentleman yields back the balance of his time. That concludes our questions. I would like to note for my colleagues that this has been a very worthwhile hearing. These are very important subject matters, and I would expect sometime in the very near future, we'll move towards a legislative markup. With that, under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days. To receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member, this hearing of the House Agriculture Committee is adjourned.